All right, I'm going to call the Mashpee School Committee meeting for June 7th, 2017. To order, first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a public comment. Phyllis Sprout, long time no see.
I know. Well, this is just a little bit of housekeeping from when I was on the committee. One of the duties that you all do is to sign warrants and you purchased the textbooks and everything. And one of the textbooks that I know I signed the warrant on was a world history textbook in the high school. And later on, after it had been in use for at least a year, I became aware that there had been a review, the first time in America, that a group of volunteers came together and with very strict criteria and with the advice of experts, they reviewed thirty-two textbooks from middle school to high school. And one of them happened to be the textbook that we now use in our world history in high school. So, I took out the part of the review, which is online, and I'm going to submit it to the committee because the publisher, in many cases, at least over fifty percent of the time, in responding to the reviewer's comments, accepted corrections. And I know that we all want our kids to have the most correct textbooks possible. I didn't know if this had already been distributed to the high school teachers, but just in case it hadn't, I wanted to make sure that you had it, you had a chance to look at it, and I leave it in your capable hands as to what you decide to do with it. And that's about it. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again, Paula.
Next item is Student Advisory Council, Frederick Hannah III.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Good evening, everyone. So, to begin first, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Bartlett on the selection to the school committee. We look forward, on behalf of all the students, to work with you this year.
Thank you.
All right. So, eighth graders are on their school trip to the nation's capital. Heard a lot of fun stories from my sister as they're heading back. They've stopped, they've toured the White House, the Capitol, the Washington Monument, and I know they've certainly had a blast at their dance last night on the river and down in DC. Final exams for all students start next week. AP exams have finished, but students are focusing on their other core classes as well, reviewing and doing year-end reviews with their teachers. Scholarship night went well for all seniors as they're all headed off to college with graduation this past Saturday. I know it was a little sad, losing a lot of seniors and a lot of friends of mine, but I know they're all off doing nice things next year. It's a busy month for all students, MCAS, finals, SATs. Students are handing out their letters of recommendations to all teachers for next year to apply for college in early action next semester. Juniors are getting their scores back from the May SATs as well as applying for the August ones and the upcoming ones in October.
Over as well next year.
Class day was this past Friday. Awards for students were given out to all seniors and their family was welcome to attend. I was able to attend and saw Josh's speech while I was at law as well. AP meetings are being held for incoming students next year as teachers are getting together with all their students to talk to the incoming students as well as all the students coming from the Quasnet School, taking their or receiving their course selection for the upcoming year. Clubs are planning for next year as they're getting organized for the incoming year. I know teachers are getting organized with that. And also, the yearbook legacy was a huge success for all students. The seniors were able to get their yearbooks. And then also, the summer reading list is being handed out as well. And then, that should be, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item is a presentation on the career technical education.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Congratulations, Ms. Bartlett, on your election, and we're looking forward to working with you. Before we get into the presentation by our Technology Center staff, I do want to publicly recognize, in front of the school committee, Mr. Kevin Blute. For those of you who are able to see graduation or attend graduation, Mr. Blute was our commencement speaker. He was chosen by our senior class and is a retiring applied technology teacher next October. His words at graduation were inspiring, were moving, and it was really a testament to all the hard work that he's put in over his career at Mashpee for the last sixteen years and overall for the last thirty-four years and the impact that he's left on our kids. When he was giving his speech, students were in tears in the audience and just shows a great deal of support for him. And I just want to recognize him publicly for his service to Mashpee Middle High School. He'll be greatly missed, and I'm just glad we got him for a few more months at the beginning of next year so he can break in the new beat. But I just want to recognize Mr. Kevin Blute. And here to present is Mr. Michael Looney. He's our Director of Career and Technical Education in the district, as well as Ms. Amanda Howe, who teaches robotics, technology, and engineering. Mr. Blute is applied technology. And Mr. Nacella, who you've all seen before and been amazed with his stuff in 3D animation, game design, so on and so forth. So, I'll give it to them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Superintendent DeBoer, school committee members, thank you very much for having us here today. I feel as though it's very important that we report out on career and technical education within the Mashpee Public Schools. We've done a tremendous amount over the years, and I really feel as though we need to kind of inform you every so often as to what exactly we're doing. Amanda, Kevin, and Sal and myself presented to the Cape Cod Technology Council last week. So, what we're going to present to you today is an abbreviated version of that presentation. So, the Technology Center is, for those of you who are not aware, the Technology Center is a series of classes within Mashpee High School. There are six different classrooms. There are six different, there are six different classrooms within one hallway, and students are able to work within these six classrooms, and you'll find out in a little bit as far as, you know, what the culture is like within that space. But the Technology Center is a place that a lot of innovation is going on, and the culture is great. We have our own website, it's mashpatech.com, which is linked through the Mashpee Public Schools website. We have a Twitter account, that's @MashPetech. And also, we like to use the hashtag whenever the students are creating new technologies, new things, we like to hashtag it with #MadeInMashpee. So, the Technology Center is only one part of career and technical education within Mashpee Public Schools. The Technology Center, in many ways, has a focus on manufacturing technology and engineering, but there are different pathways throughout career and technical education within the school. Art and communications with the visual and performing arts. There is business management and administration as a career cluster and a pathway with marketing and entrepreneurship and other courses that are offered. Education and training with early childhood education. Hospitality and tourism with the culinary arts programs. And the ProSat program within that hospitality pathway, which, as you know, won the state championship this year in culinary arts. And then the STEM and manufacturing pathway, which is represented quite a bit here today. This was actually a brochure that you all have in front of you. You also have in front of you a mug that was created this year with the seniors' cap-and-gown pictures on it. The brochure that you have in front of you really illustrates everything that we do have to offer within career and technical education, and it was set up in a way to really build on the advisory board that I'm bringing in for our programs. What I wanted to do is just really kind of give you a timeline as far as from the building opening in 1996 as to where we are now. This all would not have been possible without these three individuals in front of you. Amanda Howe, Kevin, and Sal have been instrumental in bringing in new technologies, learning themselves, bringing in different professional development, reaching out, getting professional development on their own. So, in 2000, Sal had started in the drafting course with a table in T-square. He brought in AutoCAD, he started working with AutoCAD, and soon after had changed from the AutoCAD onto PTC Creo. In 2001, Kevin Blute started within, in the program, and he started as a woodshop teacher and also teaching some graphic arts courses. So, it was all technology education at the time, just offering different courses to the students. I came in in 2003, and I was teaching a lot of the seventh and eighth grade students feeding Kevin and Sal at the high school level. In 2004, Sal took it upon himself to go out to PTC in Needham, get some training on his own time, and learn more about Creo parametric software, the mechanical drafting software that we use today. In 2004, so this is in 2004, Sal came back, and I can't say enough about what he had done at that point in time. He came back and taught both Kevin and myself the use of the program. So, the students that were coming through the Technology Center, which wasn't really defined at the time, were all being exposed to and were able to use the same software. In 2006, Sal again brought in something entirely new that was new to everyone, that was 3D animation and computer game design. Nobody had been doing it. It was something that was new, that was very progressive in what he was doing, and brought in 3D animation. In 2008, we realized that the woodshop really needed a computer lab next to it, so we had, it was outfitted with computers for all the students within the woodshop to be able to design first and then build after. So, the whole idea of designing and building and being able to see a virtual prototype on the computer and bring it in was vitally important to the program. 2010 was a pretty substantial year. It was the year where I was appointed to the Governor's STEM Council at the same time of bringing in the shop bot and also our first 3D printer. That year was a pretty significant shift in what we were doing, and it defined pretty much our path to this day as far as innovation and creativity moving forward. In 2011, Tim Lowe from Becker College came down and saw what Sal was doing in particular in his graphic, in his computer game design course. And for those of you who are not familiar with Tim Lowe, he was working at Becker College and the State of Mass, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts started up MassDIGI, Massachusetts Digital Game Institute, where they infused tremendous amount of money into really building up this program. He came down after I had met him at one of the council meetings, met with Sal, and that was when it was dubbed a Center of Excellence. And it was really what Sal was doing and what those students were doing in the classroom. In 2012, I realized the quality of the work that the students were doing, and it was a natural transition to go over to Cape Cod Community College and meet with the people over there and say, "Okay, well, I know that certain courses are being articulated through many of the vocational schools, but what we're doing is at minimum entry-level college." So, we got our drafting course, which Sal was teaching and still does, articulated with the community college. So, we got under that umbrella the vocational programs, but being a comprehensive school is a pretty substantial step in the right direction to be able to create this pathway for our students moving on to higher ed. In 2013, we attended, Sal and I attended our first Cape Cod Mini Maker Fair. It was the first year that they had, they were doing it. The maker movement was alive and well, and what we were doing in the school, it aligned very well. So, we went to the first Cape Cod Maker Fair, and soon after, realizing that, you know what, this is something that's not going away and something that we really need to really embed within our school district and within our school, so we created our own maker space. And that's what, that's what's existing, yes, it's existing today, the maker space within Mashpee Middle High School. In 2014, we brought in our first laser engraver. We have two laser engravers right now, and the laser engraver has turned out to be one of the best interdisciplinary tools for tying in a lot of the academics into technology and developing a lot of different products. So, it's been an unbelievable addition. We've infused the arts into STEM by simply bringing in, bringing in that machine and having students with their original artwork being etched on glasses, on wood projects, and so forth. At 2014 was also the year we were identified as a PTC Academy Champion. We had a big ceremony over at the, over at the high school where the bigwigs over at PTC came over and recognized what Sal was doing, what we were, how we were using this software throughout the Technology Center, and they awarded us with a recognition as a PTC Academy Champion. 2015 was another pivotal year when Amanda Howe came onboard. She has been absolutely tremendous. She is, she has everything we were looking for in filling the position within our Technology Center. She quite often reaches down to the elementary schools. She's working with students to really create this pipeline right from the elementary schools right on through the high school and showing, infusing a lot of different technologies, you know, throughout the school. She teaches the robotics. She's, we brought her into the maker space so that she could really utilize the space quite a bit. In 2016, we were identified as an Innovation Model School by MIT. They came down to highlight what we were doing with MTSS, RTI, and recognized that, you know, it was even more than that, more than what they had planned on. So, not only was Superintendent DeBoer interviewed, but Principal Bellistraci, but myself, Amanda Howe, and they really, they actually filmed us and used the information from those three videos in their course through, at MIT. It's also the year where the Department of Ed recognized our CTE programs as something very viable, and that was, last year was the first year we received Perkins funds through the federal government and through the Department of Ed, which you'll see in a second. And so, this year, we started our first National Technical Honor Society Chapter. The students are very excited about being leaders in this area. And also, we were recognized as a TechXcellence Award winner, which Amanda can speak to in a moment. And, you know, moving forward as far as this timeline, the emphasis for me is to really build this advisory board with all these different areas. We already have in many ways, but to formalize it. And next year, having periodic meetings to really, you know, focus on what we're doing, what we're doing well, what needs improvement, and how we're going to adjust going into the future. As you can see from this timeline, quite a bit changes in a very short period of time. The school was opened in 1996, but it's amazing how much we've done over the years. Over the past five years, you can see the number of tours and visitors we've had throughout. Unfortunately, you don't have this slide. I put this in last minute, and I'm going to get that to Superintendent DeBoer so you can all have it. But throughout the past five years, we've had a tremendous amount of tours. We've been recognized as a model program for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The word is out there. People are coming and visiting, and it's really worked out well with kind of putting Mashpee in the forefront of STEM education and the maker movement. And I wanted to finish up with this slide here, and it just kind of goes to show you the dedication of these individuals, what we work together on as a team on a daily basis to try to provide the best opportunities for Mashpee students. We do receive grants. We reach out and we look at grant-funded opportunities as well as different opportunities to bring on new technologies that are supplied through a grant. It's not always necessarily monetary, but as you can see, this past year alone, it was over $50,000 that we brought in as a team to support the Technology Center. So, I just wanted to kind of highlight that as well. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Amanda Howe, where she could talk to you a little bit about what she does and the culture that's being developed within the Technology Center.
Hello. Thank you for having me here tonight. First of all, I'll speak to the TechXcellence Award that we just recently received and Mashpee at the Technology Center. So, we were recognized as only one of two schools in Massachusetts for our innovation in robotics and our maker space. This is the first award that's been given out, the first award for district administration, and it was sponsored by Intel and HP. So, it was to prove that we were using technology in innovative ways, and it highlighted mostly our robotics with the maker space, which leads into robotics in our school. We have two courses, Robotics I and Robotics II. Robotics I is a general offering for most students through nine through 12 to take. Robotics II gets into our competitive robotics, which works with the VEX robotics kits and Seap perch. VEX robotics, we've competed in our first competition this past year, and as Mr. Bellistraci spoke to you earlier in the year about, our team was the first ever to compete in Mashpee High School history, and they made it to the Southern Regional Championship, which we are pretty proud of them for their first time competing. Next year, we'll be competing in Seap perch, which is underwater ROVs. We received a grant where we got four kits. The first ROV is actually built, it's over behind Mrs. O'Brien. You can check it out later on. They'll be competing in a competition in that next year. The plans for the future are to compete also in ant weight battle bots, which are one pound or less battle bots, just like the ones you see on TV, miniature versions. Another goal for the robotics and technology engineering that I would be under is computer science, computer programming. So, I just completed Raspberry Pi training two days ago up in Providence and became a certified educator for Raspberry Pi, wrote Python and a little bit of Python programming with Twitter. So, our goal is to incorporate that into tech and engineering and robotics next year along with our electronics program, so students can start to write program for electronic circuits. They'll see the output, and then hopefully tie that into our embroidery machine, where they'll start making wearables with electronic circuits. So, that's kind of my personal goal. And then, on an aside, I'm lucky enough to always bring our high school students down to Quasnet and KCC for cross-teacher student teaching, and that's truly my passion, is having my students share their knowledge. What better way to assess them and to see what they're getting from my curriculum than seeing them teach it and pass their information along? So, thank you again for having me here tonight.
So, Kevin would like to take a couple of minutes to just talk about the culture within the Technology Center.
Hi, I'm Kevin Blute, and I teach applied technology, which is woodshop. When I started teaching in Mashpee, it was pretty much all woodshop. I spent some time learning the Creo from Sal and teaching the kids, and every year I would spend a little bit more time on the, trying to implement the computer, get the drafting software in there. And when 2010, when we got the shop bot, the CNC machine, we added that, and we added the, took the Creo software, added what they call Aspire software, and then with the laser machine, we added Adobe Illustrator. So, I have kids in applied technology now that are, not only they're learning how to use all the equipment in the woodshop and do some hands-on projects, but they start with the Creo program. And some of them may have had it before and had it with Mr. Nacella. And then they jump into the laser machine, they learn how to use Adobe Illustrator. And then they, we jump into the CNC machine and they learn how to use Aspire. So, within the first month of my course, they're, it used to be all woodworking and in the woodshop, there's a lot of computer software they're learning, and then the projects are changing quite a bit too, because now they're designing projects that are on the computer, that are cut by a machine, that sometimes it's using several different machines. We did a cribbage board that, a couple of years ago, one of the students made a cribbage board on the CNC machine, used a laser to etch all the numbers on it, and used a 3D printer to print the pegs that are on the machine. They actually took it a step further and sold them down in Kensington's in the Commons, so it was part of automated manufacturing. But the culture behind the, the idea behind, at least for my, for all of our classes, was to just get kids involved and give them the chance to explore, see what we have to offer, give it a shot. I leave my doors open a lot of times for the woodshop, so kids walking by can look in and they hear noises coming out of there and what's going on in there? What are the projects that are there? Come in and try it. It's a semester course, give it a shot, see if you like it. And I think from there, they take over and it becomes collaboration. You know, I don't know that I teach it them as much as they teach me anymore, especially with the software. I've had kids teach me all kinds of things, especially if they've had Mr. Nacella before they come to me. I've learned quite a bit from the students, and it's just been a really great experience.
The nice thing is, is that, you know, all of the software that's being used is industry standard software. Students are learning it from a very young age and bringing it on right through. The culture, to speak to Kevin's point, it's infused with innovation and creativity. Students are just engaged, they love doing, they love making, they love creating, and they're helping each other. They're helping each other each and every day, learn new things, and they're supporting this entire, you know, infrastructure of creativity and innovation. Sal, would you like to say a few words about what we have up in the back room?
Yeah, well, I'll just speak, Mr. Santos, right before the meeting, we're just talking about new augmented reality software. And actually, it was approved yesterday for the fifth time we're going to go to Mass Q at Gillette Stadium. So, you know, we have another chance for our students, great students. We have a great crew here to kind of highlight, you know, the strengths of Mashpee High School, you know, in our department. Four members of the, you know, technology, National Techno Honor Society.
The National Techno Honor Society.
Yeah, so they're going to be there, four juniors. Every year I come in, I have to get a really deep bench, and, you know, this year is no different, great, great students. And we're going to be, again, working with 3D printing, augmented reality and virtual reality, and all the software, especially the stuff that I'm using right now, it's really cutting edge. It's new to the industry, so. And we're going to be, I'm starting to use it now, and our students are going to be very fluent with it next year.
So, with that, I want to open it up if anybody has any questions with what we're doing moving forward.
I have a question. Well, there's just a few abbreviations, acronyms you guys use that I'm not familiar with.
Okay.
PTC.
PTC. It used to be Parametric Technology Corporation, but they abbreviated it themselves, and now they're PTC Corporation, I believe, and they're out of Needham, Mass. And their software is being used worldwide.
Yeah, Boeing, Mercedes-Benz. It's commercial-grade software, it's very compatible, good solid work, so our students have the ability, you know, once they learn it with all of us, to transition very easily to SolidWorks or any other drafting program. There are a lot of similarities. It's a very, very, it's actually probably more difficult to learn than a lot of the other software that's adopted. So, you know, they're well, well-prepared, you know, for engineering.
And to speak to that as well, well-prepared for engineering, many of Sal's students going through his drafting courses, graduating, going off to college, in many cases, they're far beyond many of the students going into some of the engineering programs, and they're actually a teacher assistant in many of these classes. They've come back and spoken with us and told us about their experiences, and it's been great.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Okay. Amanda, you said something about Boeing to Quasnet and having your students teach. Just tell me a little bit more about that.
Okay. Hopefully, next year you'll get to see it again. But for the last two years, we've come up in midway through the year around January. My robotics students and technology and engineering high school students come up and they put on an energy carnival. It's an all-day-long event. So, there's twenty different stations. It's in collaboration with Cape Light Compact. Each station is run by students who run a little mini lesson on energy, energy efficiency, electronics, robotics. So, you'll see a realm of different activities occurring, but our students are teaching them, and every student in grades three through six here at Quasnet come through. Each grade spends an hour, so the kids carousel around to the different stations and they interact. My robotics students also come up and they mentor some of the students in the maker space here at the Quasnet School. So, we had a senior. here at the Quashnet School, so we had a senior who just graduated, Anthony Damiani, who mentored robotics. He taught computer programming and robotics to the sixth grade students and fifth grade students here at Quashnet. We also do like, we do a couple field trips up for an hour at a time where our kids do demonstrations with the robots for the Quashnet students, because our kids build obstacle courses as well as building the robots and programming the robots. So that's the Quashnet. STEM Night, we come up to STEM Night, the robotics students and tech and engineering students come to the Quashnet STEM Night and participate and demonstrate here in the library. And then this past year was our first time collaborating over at KCC with Mrs. Palmer's technology classes. So my robotics two students collaborated in her kindergarten and first grade classes, I'm trying to remember it all, I apologize, and we, they wrote programs and taught the students how to use B-bots. So elementary-level robots, they actually carried out the lesson plans, and that was done eight times, about eight times, and MIT actually videotaped that for part of their professional development video for that innovation in schools. Did we, I don't think we came up to...
Also, when KCC came up in school.
Oh, that's right, junior ambassadors, Mr. LaBelle and Mrs. Palmer accompanied 10 of the students in the first grade up to our high school to see all of our classrooms where our students put on demonstrations of all the different activities that occur in the high school and the Technology Center, including launching rockets, they looked at the augmented reality, they did sublimation, they made a candy dispenser in the woodshop, they ran the robots in my classroom, did some laser engraving, so they spent about two and a half hours, it was wonderful. I would say we had probably 20 to 30 high school students involved with the 10 elementary school kids. Hopefully we'll make that an annual event, it was wonderful.
Cool, thank you.
So, I guess a question for you, in regard to, you said there's Robotics One and Two, right?
Yes.
Both of those are semester courses?
They're semester-long courses. Next year, it looks like we'll be actually running two semesters of each, so it will be basically a full year of Robotics One and a full year of Robotics Two.
So Robotics One will run a full year or...
There'll be two sections.
Two sections.
Two sections of one and two sections of two.
It's grown that much.
Okay, okay. I guess my question selfishly for you is, is that adequate to have just two? A Robotics One and a Robotics Two? What would be the next step, I guess, as you would potentially envision it?
You know, you're always struggling with, you know, you can only teach so many classes, right? You know, I mean, we may have Amanda teaching seven next year, but no. But, and Kevin and Sal, but you know, you're always trying to balance out, how do you give the kids as much exposure as possible to the latest technologies, bringing in classes that are relevant and being able to give them an opportunity to explore those different things? What's really nice with what Amanda's training was this, these past couple of days, is with the Raspberry Pis and really bringing in more computer science, she's programming with that, programming with the robots, Sal does programming with the computer game design and so forth. So it's a constant balance, you know, as you can see, so much has changed over the past, you know, 17 years, and we're constantly looking at the courses that we offer, we always want to make sure that they're relevant and preparing the students as much as possible throughout their experience, through the high school, through grade seven through 12.
Right, and the kids get to take an independent study, so for example, Anthony Damiani, who was just that level above when it came to robotics, he did an independent study his senior year and he focused his senior project on robotics. So that allowed him to advance him, himself, and to grow in his learning. And last year, we only offered one semester of Robotics Two, and this year, coming, we're already offering two. So Principal Bellistraci is always willing to change the schedule according to the needs of the students. So it's very flexible and we're always looking at what we can do to improve their knowledge.
Since you brought it up in regard to senior projects, how many seniors in your programs did robotics or virtual reality type of senior projects?
I mentored seven students, but I know you've all been involved with quite a few individuals separately and individually, different projects, quite, quite a few we worked with.
I mentored three, you did seven. You had a couple too, you had Christian, so...
You know, and I also, I also run the school-to-career program, so I'm working with industry in placing students, working with the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce, most recently had a meeting this past week, work with the Workforce and Investment Board, as you noticed, with some of the grant funding. So, you know, what I've been working with is getting students out and experiencing outside of the school, you know, these careers for internships and job shadow experiences as well.
What's the average size of the class in your guys' programs?
It fluctuates, you know, there's, I'd say anywhere between 20, 25 students in most cases, you know, unless it's, you know, in the woodshop, we have 15 max.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay, so basically, you're at capacity for every class?
We service, we service the majority of the school, and in many cases, students are taking multiple classes within career and technical education. And again, this is one area, you know, with the culinary program, you know, a tremendous amount more students are taking courses and so forth.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions?
I have a comment. So obviously, I haven't been around since the beginning of everything happening, but I do want to say that over the last three or four years, it's really nice to see the collaboration that all the career pathways are having year over year and how much this program has grown, because obviously, this is something that's near and dear to my heart with all this stuff. And as you mentioned, like woodshop, I went to woodshop the old, the old-school way with, you know, just using some hand tools and power tools, and really, technology was a game changer with engineering and building, so it's nice to see all of this stuff working together. And I'm excited about the introduction of the Raspberry Pis and Python myself, because, you know, that is the fastest-growing and newest programming language, and I think that's really going to help our kids out. So I, you know, commend you guys for bringing that in and making that happen, so, thank you.
Actually, it wasn't for Mike, Mike's been really visionary, he's pulled the whole department together, he's always looking forward, looking ahead at grants, and he never gives himself credit, but, you know, if it wasn't for him, our program wouldn't be this way today.
He accepts every idea, he jumps on board and says, "How can we make it happen?" And that's great, and we were a team, we totally are a team, and the kids see that too. The kids know that they can come down and if they don't have Mr. Looney for our teacher, we had a student, a senior, who said, "For a teacher I never had who had the biggest impact on me." She wasn't a student who sat in his class, but she really felt impacted by him. And I think that's so great, that the kids can go between all of our classes and feel like we're all there to help support them and help them in learning.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate you coming in. We have any?
We do not have any.
We have, no one left to acknowledge at the end of the year, okay? Approval of minutes for May 24th, 2017, they're in your packet?
Mr. Chairman, I had one correction to the minutes.
Okay.
During the discussion of the school committee reorganization, we had decided that I would take the liaison role for the Cape Cod Collaborative, it just wasn't reflected in the minutes.
All right, we'll make that change.
Thank you.
Any other edits? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I move to approve the minutes of May 24th, 2017 as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And yes. 4-4, 0 opposed. Next item of business is the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, and I do want to acknowledge what a fabulous graduation ceremony we had last Saturday, and thank you to Principal Bellistraci for being the overseer of making sure that was such a successful event, and also that our baseball team just won their game tonight, so kudos to them. 10 to 4, rest for. So in the packet, you have a list of some personnel changes. This is always a hard one to whether we report them now or later, because many of the onboard people are coming for the next school year, but district-wide, we have Jamie Curley as Director of Special Education, Hope Hanscom as Assistant Superintendent, and Julia Grover, who has been an ELL tutor previously, is being reclassified in a teacher role for the association. At the Kennesy Coombs School, Sarah Bacon will be coming on board as a special education teacher. Jordana Coat, I think that's how you say her name, is the assistant principal coming on board. Amy Cullum is returning from a leave of absence, it says grade one teacher, it's actually grade two. Phoebe Lambert has been hired as a school adjustment counselor for next year. Elena Sheen Boyd will be a halftime music and halftime Title I teacher, and Casey Van Hueson is an occupational therapist. For Quashnet School, Kristen Dwyer will be the new school nurse, and Jamie Widdon is returning from a leave of absence, and she will be the STEM teacher. And most of the people that they're replacing are listed down below. If you have any questions, you know, there's nobody in there that's new. Retirements, we have Louise Baslik as a paraprofessional from the Coombs School, Kevin Blute, applied technology at MMHS, Beth Kuhn, a special education teacher at Coombs, Anne Giugio, the STEM teacher at Quashnet, Dottie Harper is a paraprofessional at Coombs, Wendy Lithwin as the assistant principal at Coombs, and Robin Phalen as the occupational therapist at Coombs. Couple people have a few days left that they'll be doing in the fall. And then departures, Rachel Agriello, she's been on a leave of absence for maternity, she has chosen not to return. Michelle Brady, we know sadly, is going to journey to Nantucket. Eileen Manganelle is leaving the district as the school adjustment counselor at Coombs. Kim Palsford is leaving as the Title I teacher at Quashnet. Kirsten Sorbo, who was the Title I teacher at Coombs this year, is asked for a one-year leave of absence, and I believe this committee granted that. Gail Bazeres, a science teacher, is leaving Mashpee Middle High School. Maura Birchill, special education teacher at Quashnet. Laura Marcinsik, a grade two teacher at Coombs. Jennifer Moses, the school nurse at Quashnet, and Kevin Turner, the dean of students at MMHS. Those are our departures. Anyone like to ask any questions on those?
Can you say again what you said about the ELL tutor-to-teacher thing?
So, to, you know, looks like a teacher, sounds like a teacher, supposed to be a teacher, previously...
Very apropos duck metaphor.
So previously, this past year, she came on board as a tutor, but she really needed to be reclassified and join the association. So, that is the personnel summary. Then we have the principal reports, we have Principal LaBelle's Coombs School report. There are 442 students at the Coombs School. I'm not going to go over everything that he has in the acknowledgements, because it is, there is an article coming out in this Friday's Enterprise, and you have a copy of it as well. This is a very busy season at the, at all the schools, and just some of the upcoming events you want to make sure to attend would be June 14th, the Flag Day Ceremony, and June 20th is the kindergarten performance for families, and there are just lots and lots of different events. Mr. LaBelle, would you like to add anything? And if you have any questions, because you might have a question that I had, so let's see if you do.
The only thing I'd like to add, we hosted our first boost-up on a fundraiser, and if you were there, it wasn't fundraiser in disguise, but if you were a child in the school, it was all about, have a fun together. And the culminating day on our campus, having the families there, having the boost-up specialists there running the whole day, it was a really great school community-building day, and we had just great feedback from the staff, obviously the kids, the parents that attended. We'd like to do it again next year, and I think the parent attendance on the campus I think will be higher. I think it was kind of new, weren't really fully understood what it was going to be like, but it was a great day for our school.
Can I add two things before?
Yeah, go ahead.
I forgot to add. I wanted to recognize, there are two second graders who received the Nick Feldman Good Sportsmanship Award. Quinlan Donovan and Colin Burge are those two students. And also, today, we held our volunteer brunch, our thank you to our volunteers, and the volunteer of the year for the Coombs School was Mrs. Gail Shalafow?
Shalafow.
Shalafow. And she's recognized for countless hours as a leader and a reader for the senior reading program with the preschool, and she's one of the reasons why it is very successful and why it ended up at the Coombs School to begin with, and she's also a member of the Coombs School Council and has been involved with some of the hiring committees for teachers and positions over there. So thank you to Gail.
Chris, you had a question?
Well, I guess my question would be, so we have Ms. Cullum's coming back for second grade, and then we have a second grade teacher leaving, correct?
There's a little bit of shifting generally in several...
So, I guess, looking at the numbers here, are we still going to have only five second grade classes?
No, there's going to be six at each grade level, K1 and 2.
Okay, so that would have been my concern, because obviously, we have 15 kids more than we have this year, and we're already at 22, so if we had another, that's, okay. Settles that, thank you.
Nicole?
Yeah, I just had a question about the, the numbers for preschool and kindergarten.
That was my question too, so Mr. LaBelle is...
And my question.
Mr. LaBelle is prepared to respond to that, because I circled the same things you circled.
I will happily respond. It's an interpretation of numbers. If you look at the principal's report and it states that, I assume that's what you were referring to, on the May 23rd, 24th, we had conducted our screening of 87 children, that's not the total of those that are registered. We have actually 117 students registered for kindergarten. Of those two days, those are the ones that we, the numbers that we actually screened. On the 23rd, we screened new students coming to the school, and on the 24th, we screened the preschool students that are in our school going into kindergarten. So that was a total of 87. Not everyone that was registered to come to school next year actually came to the screening, so those students will be screened in the fall.
So how many preschoolers do we have registered?
Sure, so we have 90 preschoolers coming. Some of those preschoolers are currently in programs, they may be in the three-year-old program, going into the four-year-old program, and then we had ones, obviously the ones that are in the four-year-old program, moving into kindergarten. So, some of them stay behind and we have new registers.
And have you heard from any of the incoming registrants about the lack of busing for the next year?
Not one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, so, 117 for kindergarten, wow.
It's a little bit higher than the district is used to at this time.
It's going to be more in the summer.
We're usually, historically, I investigated that, they're usually just about 100 at this time of year, because there's usually an influx in the summer. I'm not sure if we did a better job of getting those people in on time. We, we did, I thought, a pretty good job of reaching out, we did a lot of using the census and reaching out to those people that had not responded, so I know that did yield a few more people than may have in the beginning, but I'm hoping that we don't have the onslaught, but we do have to watch those numbers very carefully.
The other thing, so, the second graders...
Yes.
Right? This coming year will be the first class that started as preschool, but they expanded preschool, correct?
I think that is correct.
Yeah, because the preschool started 14, 15.
This should be the third.
15, 16, 16, 17, so pre-K, K1, yeah.
Right. And I know in the past, this committee had, had talked about being able to somehow... And I know in the past, this committee had, had talked about being able to somehow gain some measure of, of the impact, other than the anecdotal evidence that we've all heard, which has been very positive. So, I just want to put that out there so that you're thinking about how we'll be able to gather some empirical data to be able to compare that class as second graders compared to previous classes, to see if there's a measurable empirical difference.
I'd be happy to put something together next year for that. I, I can tell you just the impact of being in a preschool, not being in a preschool, coming into kindergarten is, is a huge impact. Feeding our own kindergarten, there is some measurable data that we've, we've looked at. I think our programming itself is evolving. So, what we started with and where we are going will be very different over the next two years. The curriculum itself will be a little more rigorous. I hate to use the word rigor with preschool, but developmentally appropriate rigor, because we, we know that there's a lot to do for kindergarten readiness.
Right. Well, as I said, this will be the first year that we'll, we'll actually be able to do some measurement, or empirical measurements, so. And I, I don't doubt that things will change and continue to evolve, but just like to have something that reassures the committee, that affirms the decision that we had made in the past.
Glad to do that.
Thank you.
And I know that former school committee member, Dave Bloomfield, is waiting to see, at least at the third-grade level of MCAS, hoping to see a-
An impact there, yeah.
I have one more thing. I just wanted to say to Paul, that was a fun run. It was very cool, and I hope you do do it again next year. Yeah. Yeah.
Are we going to be able to compare the MCAS from, what, three years ago to the MCAS of next year?
Yes, we have MCAS from three years ago.
No, I mean, I mean, data-wise, because they're really two different tests now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's always going to be a little bit of a variable, but-
Is the DESI, like, provided us the ability to do that yet, or some kind of algorithm?
Not, not really.
Because they're two completely different, like, graded tests, I mean, they're, they're not comparable, correct?
There, there is an algorithm that they have, they have news. So, they say it is comparable. They are both computer-based, and that was a very big difference, going from paper and pencil to computer-based. So, we should be able to-
I was just curious, I'd hate to skew it the wrong way, you know, and make-
Well, personally, I would, I would make the same decision that we made three years ago over again to implement that, I think it was the best thing that, or one of the best things this committee has accomplished in recent history, so.
Well, and if nothing else, even if it doesn't compare necessarily to three years ago, at least it'll give us a baseline.
Yeah.
So, three years from now, we have a baseline, start comparing and seeing how it's growing, so.
Yeah. And particularly if it's going to, to evolve, you're right, creating a baseline at any point will give us something to compare it to.
Hopefully, the test doesn't change next year.
Yeah.
Some of the, spark doesn't change, does it? From, from year to year, some of the, some of the other individual tests?
Like, star data will still be-
Well, star data is completely impossible.
And what's the other one, dibbles?
Dibbles, and second.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah. There, there are other tools that they would be able to have some comparison to. All right.
All right, we also have the Quashnet School Principal's report, and Principal O'Brien is here. She has five hundred and twenty-two students. Recognizing some of the recent wonderful events, the Career Day, which was held the Friday before Memorial Day, was very successful, and we're very grateful to all the parents who were able to share their work experience and knowledge and journey through a career with our students. We had a really successful third-grade concert, and it was the first time the third graders had an opportunity to perform in, in the, in the history of the school, and they have learned how to play recorders and ukuleles and sing. And dance, that's, that's right, that was very active concert. At the, the volunteer brunch today, the Mrs. O'Brien had sort of co-award winners for her Volunteer of the Year, and she wanted to celebrate Deb Flaherty and Heather Lakatos for their leadership of the PTO and above and beyond dedication to every event and providing all kinds of activities for kids and families and teachers. So, they, and I believe they're both stepping down from the PTO, so they'll be greatly missed, but they've been a very, very good team. A lot of transition activities, I know a couple of sixth-grade classes today visited the high school and had a conversation with Principal Balistrachi and got sort of an exposure all the way through lunchtime, which was nice. And there are lots of field trips going on every day in all of the schools, and there's a list of those on your sheet as well. Field Day coming up on the thirteenth, Recital Night on June twelfth is always fabulous, sort of intimate experience where the kids choose whatever it is they want to do, and they're very, very talented. And there's a choral concert tomorrow night, as well as an award ceremony at high school, so we apologize for that conflict. And any questions on Mrs. O'Brien's report? Next, we have the Mashpee Middle High School report, and Principal Balistrachi is here. He has seven hundred and eighteen students between those seventh through twelfth grades. And some of the highlights there is to really recognize Linda Catalina and Lindsay Kett for all of the work that goes into not only helping students apply for scholarships, but then organizing the event and welcoming all of the organizations and families that support our students through a scholarship. So, it was a very wonderful event that night, and we did talk about graduation, which was outstanding. We had our Walk of Honor on the day before graduation, where our seniors, who wore their caps and gowns, came through the Quashnet School and also the Coombs School. And it's just really a wonderful experience for the seniors to sort of travel back. I, I remember them saying at the Coombs School, "Everything is so little," is how they, they were commenting walking in. But it's such a treat for the teachers who had these students and then the students who are following behind to get that really important message about, you know, an ending goal and being a graduate of Mashpee High School. And lots of good activities with sports. I did mention the baseball team is, is still in their playoffs, and we just really want to celebrate all of our student athletes because they are just amazing individuals beyond their athletic skills. And tomorrow night is Academic Awards Night for grades seven through eleven. We already did our seniors. And there's a concert coming up next Tuesday. And then there's an eighth-grade celebration ceremony on the twenty-first. And our eighth graders are currently on their way back from Washington, DC. I think about an hour, two hours ago, it might have been, they went through New York City, according to a tweet from Ms. Melby. Nine and ten, that's just earlier than the ten-thirty. And I just, I want to acknowledge the staff from the middle school that joined these students and really make it possible for them to go on this trip. That's, in my opinion, dedication above and beyond, because they're not getting anything, anything extra for that twenty-four-hour service they're providing for our students. But from all of the, the pictures I've seen, they're having a great time, yeah, so.
I guess a question, it looks like the out-of-school suspension numbers are pretty high. Is this typical for the spring?
There was a small spike recently. Towards the very end of the school year, oftentimes you start to see a little bit of a rise. But we're working right now as we go into our handbook, we're looking to focus on that as a key goal moving forward to decrease out-of-school suspensions, increase opportunities to learn within the school setting. And that's something we're going to be focusing on, not just next year, but moving forward in the significant future.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, we have the final report, I believe, of the Special Education Administrator, Michelle Brady. And it shows that there are three hundred students on, who have IEPs. If you are doing any comparison to last month's report, the April report versus this one is the May, you'll see a decline in the MMS/MHS number from, previously it was reported at one-twenty-three, and now it's reported at one-twelve. That had to do with a recording error of students who had 504s in the easy IEP database from one of the guidance counselors, which has been corrected. So, it's not as if we-
But now the seniors are, are not, so we have, I think, seniors that graduated, so.
Right, but that-
For May, they were-
Right. You can send us your June report from a distance. Would you like to add any questions, Mrs. Brady?
No, just, you know, very proud that we did have a student who's hanging out, who's still graduated with her diploma.
Awesome.
Okay.
And another one next year on the sixth, that's also a student graduating, so it's still part of our Mashpee family. And I will miss Mashpee and, and Mashpee. But I did meet with the new director, and so I'm pretty sure it's going to be really good.
Two things I'd like to say, both of those two students you just referred to are going on to college, correct? Or the one that just grad, finished?
The one who just graduated is going to graduate college, the other one, I don't know yet, because it's projected, but yeah.
That's right.
And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Michelle Brady for her years of service to Mashpee, I believe it's six. And I've had the pleasure to work very closely with her, both, both in my role as a principal and then moving up into central office. And she really is an outstanding administrator. She always does, makes decisions that are student-centered. She's very conscious of the budget and the overall needs of the district, but she will do what is right every single time for each individual student. And she's very collaborative and just a lot of fun to work with, so I'm going to greatly miss her being part of our team. So, thank you, Michelle. You have the athletic department notes from A.D. Matt Triverry. There's quite a bit there, I'm not going to read them all, I just do want to, again, reiterate that we have outstanding student athletes, and it's really such a pleasure to watch them and actually to know them as people. It's pretty impactful, so I'm very glad for these people. Very talented.
All right.
And enrollments, which we did sort of summarize, but four hundred and forty-two at the Coombs School, five hundred and twenty-two at the Quashnet School, two hundred and seventy-eight in the middle school, four hundred and forty at the high school, for a total of sixteen hundred and eighty-two students as of May.
So, it's interesting, we will end the year probably at the highest level of students that we've had since two thousand thirteen.
And there are multiple pages of calendar of events, but if you want the cheat sheet, you would look at this handout that you have here. They're all in there. That's an easier way to look at them. And, okay. That brings us to the Blueprint for Progress. So, this is our new strategic plan. We're calling it the Blueprint for Progress, three-year plan. And we have worked on various drafts of this over this past school year. It started with the leadership team. It was also something that our compass teachers provided input on, as well as in each school's school council. And so, it starts with our vision that every student, every day is safe, respected, and insured to achieve academic excellence in a personalized learning environment that includes quality teaching, small class sizes, and the use of technology. Our mission, the Mashpee Public Schools ensures a comprehensive program of academic rigor, scope, and depth to prepare all students to be college and career-ready and to value service to others. Last summer, or, I don't know which, for sure which summer it was, it might have been earlier than that, two thousand and fifteen, maybe, we developed our Mashpee Non-Negotiables. This was also done very collaboratively with many members of our school community. But we ended up with these, which is also tied in closely with our MTSS. So, we value all students. Every decision we make is data-driven to improve student learning and achievement in a system of rigor and relevance. Our classroom instruction and interventions are informed by data-based problem-solving. Our district academic and behavioral protocols are implemented with fidelity. Our professional learning and collaboration improve educator practice by focusing on curriculum and instruction that are implemented with fidelity. And lastly, we establish and sustain partnerships to ensure that all students are college and career-ready, which actually, if we were going to slightly edit that one, it would also include civic-ready, is sort of a new expectation. On the back of that page, you have three goals with initiatives under each one. And the first goal is about learning and teaching. That professional learning and opportunities for collaboration that focus on instruction, curriculum, the learning environment, and student achievement will improve educator practice and result in improved outcomes for all students. So, by improving what, what and how our teachers teach, that will result in improved outcomes for our students. There's three steps under that particular goal. Develop and maintain, develop and implement an aligned, written, taught, and assessed curriculum and assessment system based on the Massachusetts Frameworks, with emphasis on literacy, numeracy, and writing in every content area to ensure all students are college, career, and civic-ready. The second initiative is to develop and implement a multi-tiered system of supports framework to provide early, effective instruction to support all students, to allocate resources and supports to all schools based on student achievement and need, and to provide multiple pathways for success. And the third initiative is to provide inclusive learning experiences that are active, engaging, and responsive to the academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of all students. I don't know if you want to ask questions along the way. I have no problem with you wanting to stop me. Okay, just tell me. I don't know. I'm just looking over there. The second goal of this Blueprint for Progress is to use data strategically. Mashpee Public Schools' MTSS Problem-Solving Protocol will guide our practice in addressing the academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of all students, resulting in improved outcomes for all students. The first initiative is to develop and implement a data management platform that will serve as an early warning system for meeting student needs. The second initiative is to build and nurture a system-wide culture in which the tools and protocols of Mashpee's MTSS framework serve as the foundation for problem-solving and decision-making in all areas. And the third initiative is to interpret data to provide targeted, tiered instruction and support to all students. The third goal is to engage all, engaging all stakeholders. We will foster shared responsibility for ensuring all students are college, career, and civic-ready by building trust, collaboration, and engagement among students, staff, families, and community partners. The first initiative is to develop and implement effective two-way communication for both internal and external stakeholders. The second initiative is to cultivate innovative partnerships with members of our MPS staff to provide a sustainable system of support for all students. And the third initiative is to build and nurture a culture of high engagement and customer service to ensure pride in our district and communicate to all stakeholders why it's great to be in Mashpee. And then there is a chart that sort of lists each of the initiatives and then some of the measures that we would use to, as evidence as to our progress. We're, we finished our second year of our work in our MTSS, and we are certainly not where we would consider a full implementation stage. It generally does take about five years, but we have a pretty narrow focus, and we are going to continue in year three without adding anything and so that we can continue to help our staff really reach a level of comfort with everything that, that becomes an automatic, so. And I do view this as a living document, it's, so it's not, it will be something that we can continue to update or add something to and, you know, monitor our progress on an annual basis. Do you want me to go over the progress, the evidence? What we would look for in order to measure where we are sort of on the continuum with each initiative?
I don't have a problem reading it.
Yeah, I don't...
Okay.
I'm okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, yeah, I was looking at the evidence of progress in particular, and I'm just glancing at it. But can you talk through the Goal Three? You know, this is something that a lot of people struggle with, is how we measure engagement, successful engagement. So you have a lot of things listed here. But those aren't really measures.
No, what, and this came out of, a lot of this brainstorming of these areas of evidence came out of our compass group. And there are examples of some of it, but we would have to incorporate a survey of some type. I have personal goals related to sort of building some coalitions within the community so that we, they know, they know what's going on in the district and when we need to rally sort of the troops, they're already sort of part of our team. So you are correct that to just list some of these things are just more examples of it. In each of the teacher evaluation, there is sort of family and community engagement is one of the standards that we look at. So we can, teachers provide evidence of sort of how they communicate internally to those stakeholders who are the families. But, and then the principals have their methods of communicating externally to some of the stakeholders. But we're continuing to grow that so that it becomes... So every, there's no one that is feeling like communication is poor, the questions are answered immediately when, when we have them. We want to get more partnerships into the schools so that they, they're supporting us or volunteering or partnering, like some of the things that Mr. Looney talked about. So in terms of that third goal, we need to do whatever we can to continue to grow. Sort of, sort of my vision is that there aren't so many doors that keep people out or... It's, we represent the community and we need to make sure that they feel that.
I think the challenge, and maybe that's the next step on this, is though, being able to quantify, when have we adequately accomplished each of these initiatives? You know, whether it's, you know, the developing and implementing effective two-way communication or, you know, developing and implementing MTSS. How do we know, and I guess that's part of your challenges, how do you know we've accomplished it and accomplished it in a, what I will put as, successful manner? Because, you know, we can, we can have a handbook in place. And matter of fact, we do have handbooks in place that are supposed to be guides for everyone. I have no idea how effective that is. But I will leave that to you to ponder and think about how you would determine that effectiveness.
Well, I know, I know we've had conversations about surveys. I know that the middle high school just completed, or their staff has completed, is completing an MTSS survey so that we can get a read on what the teachers feel they still need. Because we have leadership teams at each building and they get the best sort of PD on it and they know it well. And so the last time we had our consultant come, he worked with each grade-level team so that they weren't having a middleman. So, I mean, surveys is not necessarily the best gauge of, of the information that you, but it's one piece of data that we will try to capture in terms of where to improve with communication or any of the initiatives.
Yeah, I was specifically getting at, I mean, I have a bit of experience trying to measure improved engagement with stakeholders. So I'd be happy to give you some suggestions, but, you know, hard numbers of attendance rather than just listing events, for one, would be good. But also, you know, there are some other measures that sort of sync up with some of the things you've listed here that I might be able to speak with you about. And I just, I'll look at this a little bit closer and see. So not just surveys, but, you know, measuring the types of attendance you get to at different events. How many parents do you get versus community members? Or what are community, how many community events do you hold versus how many events are held at the school? So I think there are some different ways of binning some of these things that you could actually track them as measures, rather than just have a big bucket of stuff, so.
So tracking...
And that's just specifically on the third goal.
No, I know, and that's, that's actually the harder goal to try to gather some data on. And I know we, we generally do monitor, but not specifically attendance at events in terms of who's, what role someone's in. But we can do a better job of reaching out to community members other than parents to see who we can get to attend certain events and what kind of events would they attend.
And under social media for the 3.1 initiative, you know, I don't see, what do you call those, Chris? You know, the metrics from the, from when people go to a URL or people open a link? Or how many people look at the, what are they called? Yeah, I guess it's hits, but, but, you know, how many people look at Mrs. O'Brien's blog?
She does have that information.
That's part built into the blog and I can track how many parents open that or stakeholders each week. And it averages about 300, about 350 a week. Goes up and down.
That's decent.
If it's a vacation week, no.
Yeah, I hear.
That's pretty good.
And I, and we, you know, all of the principals and myself are on Twitter, but we, like the Mashpee Public Schools Facebook page, I always monitor how, how many things are shared. And I think the, I think the one, well, on the Super Bowl might have been the highest one I've ever seen with like eight or nine thousand it went out to, so by the time it was done being shared. So there, I mean, obviously with technology, there are better, easier ways to get at some of that data.
Yeah. It just related a bit to the second goal of using data strategically. I think data isn't just about the student outcomes, but it's also about the district and sort of how it's represented in the broader community. And I think we heard a lot of people, when I was out campaigning for this position, wanting to hear the reputation of our schools be enhanced and see us in the press more and have our students have more visibility. And so I'm really interested in helping promote that. And so I think data, collecting data on communications and engagement also helps, you know, achieve that goal as well, so. Thanks, sorry for the...
No, but that just triggered something I meant to remind everyone of, and it will come out on Friday's email. But this Friday's Mashpee Enterprise will have a full-color separate supplement on our graduates, our class of 2017. It's the first year that Mashpee will have that. And I want to encourage everyone to buy that because it should be a pretty nice keepsake.
All right, any...
Thank you, I appreciate your input.
Any further questions on this? All right, as Superintendent DeBoer indicated, this is a living and breathing document. All suggestions ongoing will be appreciated.
Most appreciated.
All right, next, next item of business is the reorganization of subcommittees and liaisons. So on page 34 of your packet, you have a listing of all the subcommittee and liaison assignments. Looks like we did get, Nicole, you're in the right place on this one.
So are we able to do this without George here?
He gets all the ones.
Yeah. It'd be really easy, actually.
When you're not here, you...
Did he indicate any that he was...
I didn't hear anything.
I think he wants the substance use task force. And I think that's supposed to be substance use task force.
I think he wants the health advisory again, unless someone else wants it. So if you have questions, I know health advisory meets four times a year. Substance abuse. George wanted to be the primary or he wanted to be the alternate?
I think because of the involvement that he's had this year, I don't know if the meetings are hard for him because they're at 10 o'clock on like a Wednesday, but I think he's pretty well involved with it. I don't want to speak for him, though.
I would imagine that you would want to do the primary as well. Speaking with him on that stuff.
All right, do you want to be the secondary on that, Chris?
On which one?
Substance abuse.
Yeah, I can do that. Unless somebody else wants it.
Yeah, I was going to say, no. Nope, hearing, no objections?
No.
All right. I imagine George wants to be on the FinCom again.
I'm sorry, could you...
Finance Committee. They meet once or twice a month. The primary thing is right around the budget time, so when we submit our budget, Paul and, Paul Funk and the superintendent will go to that meeting. But George also goes and he attends other, other finance committee meetings that they don't attend. So some of their regular sessions.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll put George down unless someone else has a burning desire?
No, I was just going to offer to be the alternate, but he didn't have one, so maybe one isn't needed.
Well, we could, eyes, eyes have an alter...
He's a perfect person to have an alternate, yeah, he's always in some kind of island.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
A lot of other countries.
So next time he's in New Zealand, Nicole can do...
Is he going to have more of those if he has an alternate?
Don't know. Kind of working up here from the bottom. Board of Selectmen?
I would like to volunteer for that if I may.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Jeff? And alternate?
I will be alternate.
You want to be alternate? Okay. Wapinac Tribe?
Are we just going to scratch that off there or...
We sent them a letter. I don't know if we, did you hear anything back?
I did, I did not hear anything back. And I know that there was some, not that it makes any difference, but I know there was some discussion at the selectmen level that they thought that that liaison stayed with them at their level. I know John mentioned that. I mean, not that it makes any difference, I just, I don't know.
Well, I know when we sent the letter to them assigning you, we had cleared it through the town manager and the board, and the Board of Selectmen.
I mean, you can keep me on there, I know that, Nicole, you mentioned you wanted to do Indian education as well, right? So I don't know if it makes sense to...
Well, I was just, I was just interested in serving some role with the tribe. When I spoke to you about it offline, or when we dropped by, you thought that that liaison role might not exist or...
But either way, I think that they're two perfect hand-in-hand liaison jobs, doing Indian Ed and a tribal liaison. I don't know, you could even give them a different name, but I have no problem handing off to Nicole or I'll keep it, it's completely up to you.
Yeah, maybe you can just bring me up to speed on this letter. Who the letter went to? To the chairman?
Yeah, it went to the chairman of the tribe. And, you know, given some of the, what I heard during the debates for the school committee openings this past time, it sounded like there may be some opportunities if we're able to be proactive, working with the tribe to come up with some cooperative programs and funding for those, so.
Well, I'd love to do that, it's, you're amenable.
I was hoping that with you and we'll figure it out. And I have some people we can reach out to if the letter didn't work and see if anybody's even interested.
Okay. And maybe, maybe the letter didn't filter down from the chairman, I'm not sure. All right, so Nicole's going to be the primary for the tribe? And Jeff will be the alternate? Is that the same for Indian education then?
Sure.
Unless somebody else wants to be alternate. I don't know if Chris mentioned last, you were interested in.
I was the primary, right before you, but I could be alternate if you'd like, I don't know.
No, no, not passing up yet, if you want to take it.
Okay, so I'll leave Jeff.
So who's the...
So Nicole will be the primary for Indian education and for the Wapinac Tribe. Jeff will be the alternate for both. Okay?
And Nicole, I don't know if you're available on Tuesday night? Is the, at 5:30 is the next Indian Ed Parent Committee meeting? No, I think that you would be, you know...
Tuesday, this coming Tuesday?
Is that the high school? Is that class night or...
I don't know, I'll have to check.
Okay, anyway, if you can.
I've only been back in town a few hours, so...
Oh, okay, I will be there, so if you can't, that's...
Okay, parent night?
It's the parent committee.
Parent committee, okay. Thank you.
All right, well, let's continue working up here from the bottom. School start time? That's on, I guess, hiatus right now.
We're going to resurrect it, but I think you two ought to stay on the ones that we're on.
Probably would make sense to continue for continuity purposes, unless someone else wants to be involved.
Nicole, do you want to be involved?
Yeah, exactly, please.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I mean, if I sign up for working from the bottom, what happens when we get to the top?
That's true.
I, I don't think you'll be able to keep me out of school start times discussions, but I don't know that I need to be a formal designee.
A little anecdote, I did speak to someone, a parent in Chatham today, because Chatham did their, switched their start times.
Chatham did?
Oh, it did go through.
Yeah, so it got approved.
When are they switching?
When are they switching? I didn't get that date, I think it's coming up this year, or the next year, I'm sorry, the next school year.
So FY '19?
So Chatham, we've had an elementary, like, so Chatham and Harwich.
Was the later start time for the high school, earlier start time for the...
So Monomoy.
Is that Monomoy?
Yeah.
That's Monomoy.
Chatham-Bird merged with Harwich to be Monomoy.
Did they? I don't know.
There is no Chatham.
Pretty sure.
Yeah, and they don't have a separate school.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was Harwich and Chatham that merged.
I just go there to have really good food.
All right. SIC Bank, so they meet every once in a while, whenever someone runs out of days. Usually the meetings last 15 minutes or less.
I am not primary on many things here, so if you don't mind, I'll do SIC Bank. And if nobody else is looking, I can stay on boosters if somebody else wants to, take that. I don't want to skip all the way to the top, but I'm losing spaces here and I haven't been primary for...
Well, since you have children at that level, too.
Yeah.
Okay. I can be the, the alternate for SIC Bank. See, where are we? CPAC.
Nicole asked me a question about actually what that is.
CPAC, Michelle? Yeah, it's Special Education Parent Advisory Council, so I would try to run four weeks a year. And then if there was interest, our parent workshops, there's one parent workshop that we acquired, it's called Basic Rights of Parents and Specialized Students. So I would present that and then eventually we have speakers, there's like Subjective Functioning, Specialistic Knowledge. It's open to all the, all the parents and specialized students in the district, as well as any other interested people. Historically, we have not had much attendance.
Historically, we have not had much attendance. I'm hopeful maybe with the director people being interested here, and maybe we'll start to be speaking, but sometimes we had zero people coming, unless we had two. But it's not always a bad thing either, because sometimes when parents are happy with the services they're getting, they're not happy they're coming to the meetings, and when they're not happy, they want to come and change stuff.
I know I was on it last year and did not have good attendance. And I think there were conflicts on the dates. But I would be willing to try again. If someone would like to be an alternate for that?
I'll be alternate or primary if you feel like it's gonna be a conflict.
Let's see.
Okay.
What the schedule, and then we can always, yeah.
I'll be secondary.
So that's a good point. We can always change these, so if you find that it's not working, just let me know.
And with George not here, we should probably leave some alternates open.
Yeah, it's true.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he's, oh, he's, he's primary on everything now. Planning and construction?
Can I please go back on planning and construction?
You want to go back on that?
I was on it, didn't have a single meeting for an entire year. I get off of it, and we're building almost a whole new.
We're gonna add the vestibule to the list.
We're gonna push on that vestibule, yeah.
There you go.
And Prussia Washington.
How about if we put George as an alternate? Unless someone else wants it?
I'd like George being the.
He seems to have a.
So, you know, when there's some upcoming meetings, that you didn't go to last year, but George did.
Right.
Anyway, we'll make sure that you know about them.
Please.
So you can pick out.
It's gonna be awesome. And hand dryers, I finally get to get my hand.
I took a picture of a really good one at a store that was small and very power. I want that brand.
Before I leave this school committee, we will have good hand dryers.
You just can't think.
All right. Health advisory, we need an alternate. As I said, it only meets four times a year. Hearing none, I'll volunteer for that.
Usually make those, George's scheduling.
I know. I'm not too worried about it. Okay, and we got Nicole as the primary liaison for the CAPECOT Collaborative.
And I think the issue with that is you cannot have an alternate, right? Or if you do, it's gotta be like, in writing, or they can't vote, so I don't even know if it's worth it.
Worth having it?
You can show up, but you really can't do anything.
Okay.
I'm on my own.
You're on your own.
Do we need an alternate for boosters?
I wouldn't think so, but if somebody wants to be, I don't know. It's not very intense.
Okay. I don't see a big ground swell of. All right. So let's move to the top here. Actually, let's try to get in order here. So curriculum. So currently, we had Jeff and George, with Scott being the alternate. How many times do you meet?
We haven't.
No, but you probably-
I was gonna say, we're probably gonna be a lot more. So I have no issue staying on that committee.
Okay. Does someone else want to be on that? Nicole?
I'd like to.
You'd like to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jeff? And Nicole? And what if we have George be the alternate? Unless, Chris, you want that?
Can we see how the other ones play out first?
Sure. Negotiation. So myself and Chris were on this with George as the alternate. I would hope that this should be an easy year for negotiations. But as soon as I say that, it jinxes, right? Chris, are you wanting to continue on that?
I wouldn't necessarily say I'm wanting to, but I will.
You will? Okay. I know, Jeff, you can't because of a conflict. Nicole?
I can excuse myself.
Do you have an interest in that, or?
No, I was kind of looking at a different one.
Okay.
In addition, but.
I think I will stay on that since I just promised it was gonna be an easy year. And leave George as the alternate. Okay. All right, policy. We have Chris on there, or had Chris on there, and we had Scott on there.
I think we met maybe, what, three times last year, and it was pretty, pretty early in the reorg too, we met, and that was about it.
Yeah, we had some policies that Nurse Stacy helped to revise. Previous to that, we played around with a couple others.
Yeah, I think that was really about it. I think that's one of those that you just never know.
And I think when I was on, I think we met like three or four times. It just really depends on what comes up. But it seems like the historically three or four time meeting, and we met for a couple hours, brought it to the board, boom, boom, boom.
Which again, I'm okay with staying on that if nobody else wants to, but if somebody else wants to, I'm also okay with stepping aside.
I do see that right now George is not the primary subcommittee member for anything.
That is true.
But I don't want to call him out.
Well, health advisory.
Yeah, but those are liaisons.
Oh, oh, up above, okay, yeah, he should be.
So. Unless, Nicole?
Well, I, you know, I get paired up with each of you on one of these, and I haven't gotten to do anything with you yet, so I'd happily sit with you on that, just so I have a chance to work with you, Chris.
All right, fantastic.
Okay, so Chris and Nicole? All right.
Saw penning approval by John Bartlett. Who I'll review this with later.
Oh, I got George's.
I know how that comes.
He was out there campaigning for you.
I'm gonna put myself as the alternate, so George doesn't end up being the alternate on all of these. All right, and then superintendent evaluation, so.
This would be my fourth year in a row, so I would like to get off of the superintendent evaluation subcommittee.
I was on it the year before this one with Mr. Gorman.
I don't mind being an alternate.
Sounds like a good one for George.
Yes, it does.
All right, I'll.
It's an important yet unexciting subcommittee.
I will help with George. Well, so.
Nothing to do with the subject.
No. Who wants to be alternate?
I said I would do alternate.
Oh, you're gonna do alternate. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so George and I will do it.
Just because I have a little bit of corporate knowledge of the process, and it is a little fun.
Yeah, so this coming year, because everything kind of got messed up with Mrs. DeBoer being interim and then moving over, we'll have to do the formative and then the substantive, so. Yeah, the formative, so.
So that being the case, we can go back to curriculum and I can go ahead and do the alternate for that.
Oh, okay. All right.
Got all that, Gail?
Curriculum, I'll be the alternate, yes.
All right, so.
I'm gonna come to the next meeting and change all this.
So, let me just go through the list, make sure we got it all right. So for curriculum, I have Jeff and Nicole as the primary and Chris as the alternate. For negotiation, I have myself and Chris as primary, George as the alternate. For policy, I have Chris and Nicole, myself as the alternate. For superintendent evaluation, I have George and myself, with Jeff as the alternate. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. For boosters, we have Chris as the primary liaison. For CAPECOT Collaborative, we have Nicole as the primary. For health advisory, I have George as the primary, myself as the alternate. For Indian Ed education, I have Nicole as the primary, Jeff as the alternate. Planning and construction, I have Jeff as the primary, George as the alternate. For CPAC, I have myself as the primary, Chris as the alternate. For SIC Bank, I have Chris as the primary, myself as the alternate. For school start times, I have myself and Chris. For the Wapinaw tribe, I have Nicole as the primary, Jeff as the alternate. For substance abuse task force, I have George as the primary, Chris as the alternate. For finance committee, I have George as the primary, Nicole as the alternate. For Board of Selectmen, I have Jeff as the primary, Chris as the alternate. Is that correct with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, good. Next thing in the packet is a proposed school committee meeting schedule for next year. So typically in July and August, we only have one meeting. And in September, since the meeting is early in the month, we combine the finance or business meeting and the regular meeting. Same thing for November.
That has to do with the conference.
All right. And then February, it's combined, and I believe that has to do with when we have to approve the budget, which is early February.
Plus there's a vacation in there.
Yes.
My only comment is it'd be interesting to see when the, what timeframe the national conferences. I know none of us went this time, and it'd be nice if we had the plumbing to do it next year, but I don't know if it's gonna, any of these states are gonna conflict with that.
I believe that's. I believe it's in.
Tahiti, I believe.
Yeah. Austin, I believe.
George can go already, he's there anyway.
Exactly.
I have a free place to stay in Austin.
All right.
Let me go.
Will you check in, Gail?
Okay, good one.
This is the mask?
This, the one in November is them, the one in Hyannis, the mask, mask.
Okay.
And then there's a national one. Where was it at this year? Denver?
Denver.
Denver.
So mask in Hyannis in November.
April 7th to the 9th.
Selection not confined. All right.
Thanks, Gail.
I know it's hard to project out your schedules, but does anyone have any issues with these meeting dates at this point?
June 6th in 2018, I'm not sure if I can make that one.
Have a meeting at 7 o'clock that day. I can get you out to July, that's about as far as I'll go.
I'll put them on my calendar, that's usually the way it works.
All right.
Do they have to?
Do you know the dates of that one in November?
Usually starts on Thursday, right? Like, check in Thursday, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And then Sunday morning, I think you can do some.
All right, any committee reports?
Did you want to do anything about a date for a retreat?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do. I skipped over that. Apologize. So typically, we do a workshop in the summertime, usually try to do it in August.
I'm gonna do anything around August 16th, that's a Wednesday.
I, I mean, right now I don't have an issue with August 16th, I honestly can't tell you what that's gonna look like next month, but.
I wouldn't really know until August 15th. But I'm, rather than right now, I'm open.
It works for me.
It may not work for me.
How about the 17th?
The whole week.
Is that a bad week? Okay.
That's.
So.
Wait, when's the potential China trip?
Mrs. O'Brien, is there a potential China trip Mr. Gorman should know about?
What are the dates? That's a long, that's like that, almost a full middle of August, right?
I'm sorry.
Teacher one.
The potential teacher China trip?
The teacher trip was in July, and there were three teachers I know that were interested in applying for it.
Oh, it's July? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry. Forget it, sorry.
Okay. And the administrative one is either November or April.
She's.
I already told you I carry your bags, right?
What about August 10th? That's a Thursday after having been together August 9th, but.
How about, that would work for me. August 10th?
August 10th is a Thursday. Yeah.
Okay.
Like at 6:30 at night again? Nobody's ever interested in like meeting in the morning on a Saturday or something like that?
Oh, it's in the evening, it's not during the day?
Normally it's not.
I would know during the day.
It doesn't have to be a weekday, I don't care if you want to do it Saturday.
No, we don't. Saturday in the summertime.
Hey, whatever, you're missing the, you know, my thing about retreats is a retreat should not be another school committee meeting. And that's what we're doing, we're having a meeting at Thursday night at 6:30. It should be different, a different location, a different mood, informal. I preach that thing every year, and it always ends up being 6:30 in Patty's office.
No, so write, write it down.
We did the library.
We're gonna do an adventure this time.
Yeah, exactly. It should be a team building.
I didn't realize it was, it was a Thursday evening in your office. I don't think I'm available.
Go to the lanes, have fried pickles.
Could play a little cornhole?
Yeah, exactly.
A little bocce, bocce tournament, that's really good for committee bonding.
Why don't, tentatively, we set it for the 10th?
We will totally change it up. We will not even recognize it as a meeting.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't believe you, but I'm.
Well, I'm gonna work, we're working on that. Bradbury has some good team building activities, I'll have her come do one of them.
All right.
See if we can cross the lake with our carpet squares.
And so, so we have a meeting the night before.
Yeah. But I guess the question would be in regard to the 10th, whether during the day or evening works best.
Nothing before 4:30 is gonna work for me.
Nothing before 4:30.
Unless it's a Monday or a Friday.
And since you don't want to do two nights together, do you want to back it up into that first week of August, like 3rd?
Or the 2nd? About August 2nd, that's the Wednesday before. Good? Maybe?
As long, as long as the time is after four thirty, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, that might be better than doing it back to back evenings.
Okay, so let's.
Sold food for August second.
August second, starting at, let's say, five o'clock. That'll give you time to get here.
Sold food.
We'll come up with a.
Get some yoga mats?
See, now I'm being patronized.
Oh, it'll be good. Okay, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Location, or was that TBD, I hope?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, no, it's too early to tell you that yet.
At least give me that, right?
We'll work on a location and an agenda.
Awesome.
Didn't you say you had a boat, didn't you say you had a boat that was going in the water soon?
I do, yeah. That would be an interesting, interesting meeting. Twenty-one foot sailboat.
Committee reports. No, no committee reports? Anything else that anyone wanted to bring forth to the committees? Yes?
If they may, sir, I just, I know that there was a letter on the elaborate school committee credenza. I think Gail put it on there. Oh, there you go. Was you already going to talk about that? About the early bird for the combined Mask Mass.
Oh, yes.
I didn't know. I think the caveat, though, that Superintendent DeBoer mentions that if we take advantage of this, it is not cancelable. Is that a right word? You cannot cancel it.
Cancelable?
Cancelable, that's not correct. In front of a bunch of teachers, too.
Is that just something he's got? I don't see any.
It was.
You know.
So the, so the registration has to be in by July fifteenth. And the dates, what's the date of the conference?
Is it number eleven?
No, no, number eleven. That's it.
Is it? I don't, I don't.
It's always there.
I know, you're right. I knew that sounded familiar. I know, it's terrible.
So the conference is November first through the fourth.
November one through five.
One through four. So check your calendar, and let Gail know if you'll be able to attend. And then we'll bring this up at the next meeting again, because we'll have time.
We hope we get a good dinner this time.
All right. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Sure.
Anything else needs to be brought to the attention of the committee? Chris?
I do have something, a little bit of a plug for tomorrow night, I guess. At the Mashpee Public Library tomorrow night, six to seven o'clock, there is going to be another internet safety, cyber awareness type presentation put on by the Vosso County District Attorney's Office, and I will be there as well doing a presentation. And again, that's tomorrow at the public library at six PM. And then, I don't know if you want to say anything about, if you have any details, I received that email today about potentially next Wednesday. Something going on. I won't say anything about it if you're not aware about it, but.
Who sent you the email?
Where did I get that from? It was about another event potentially next Wednesday.
So that's the fourteenth?
Yes. Okay, well then, never mind. More to follow on that one.
Okay.
I got my email, I got it. Maybe a couple hours before coming here.
This made me, I just forgot something that I was going to bring up, but I'll think of it later, I'm sure. All right. If there's no other, oh, I remember now. In regard to the next meeting, I believe we're going to have the technology people come. State of the network come. So I know there's several people that are interested in that. If there is anything else in particular that you want to see on the agenda, please let myself or Gail or the superintendent know prior to the Friday before the meeting, okay? With that, looking for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of strategy for collective bargaining for Unit A, and also for strategy for negotiations with non-union personnel. We will return from executive session in regard to the Unit A contract. So, do I have a motion?
If I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Jeff. Any discussion? Hearing none, Nicole?
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you, everybody. All right, I'm going to call the school committee meeting back into general session for June seventh. Next item of business is in regard to ratification of the Unit A union contract for two thousand seventeen through twenty. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the Mashpee Teachers Association Unit A contract for two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty.
To ratify.
No, to ratify.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. All good.